The 5th, 2023, the Culver Town Council meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded on the town's YouTube channel and participation in this meeting is your consent to be recorded and rebroadcast. Those online and those in the room at this time, please moot or turn off any electronic device. I'd like to just clarify one thing of those of you that have the agenda. We only have one public hearing tonight, and that's on the rezoning issue. The solar part is not going to be a public hearing. Roll call, please.
William Clevenger.
Present.
Bill Giffen.
Here.
Bill Hamm.
Here.
Sally R. Tardy.
Here.
Rich West.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have the motion to approve the June 27, 2023, and the July 11, 2023 regular meeting minutes, please? It's been moved by Mr. Hamm, the second. Mr. West seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign, passed. Okay, I have 6:32, and I'm going to open the public hearing on zoning on the Skyline Mr. Easterday.
I am second.
Oh, second, thank you. Say aye.
For the record, James Easterday, on behalf of the applicants, what we're here for this evening is seeking a rezoning of 8:30 North Lake Shore Drive from R2 to C1 Commercial District. The property is located just north of Papa's Pizza. I've given you a handout, and you can see pictures of it. Basically, it's between Papa's Pizza and a property owned by the town of Culver, which I consider the water tower property, that's what I always call it, and it's basically an industrial property on the north side. The Culver zoning ordinance defines C2 as a general commercial district designed for the types of activities that would include a hotel motel. If you look at the front page of the handout that I've given you, that is a page from the Culver Comprehensive Plan. And the Culver Comprehensive Plan passed in 2014 specifically designates this property as being commercial property or being in the plan for commercial property. And what we're doing is we're seeking to just make it what the Comprehensive Plan and the actual situation on the property is. There was a hotel motel built on the property based upon county records in 1956. This was 20 years before our zoning ordinance, and it has maintained that for over 60 years. And so, we're just asking the board to make it what it is and to allow it to be a C2 of property as it stands. So rather than beat it in horse, it looks like you have a lot of people who are non-interested by the project here tonight. So I'll ask if there's any questions or take questions if you want.
Just for clarification, given your opening statement at the beginning, you said it was being moved from R2 to C1, but it is C2.
It is C2. I apologize.
No, that's fine. Make sure that doesn't change.
Okay, public comment. Anyone online? Not in the room, please.
Do you have three letters that I received?
Yes, would you like to read the letter?
I can take care of that.
Okay.
The first one is from Tommy Denham. Dear Culver Town Council, I've been a local resident in Culver since 1997 on Lake Shore Drive and have concerns about the recent discussion of having the In By The Lake rezoned to a commercial district. My concerns I feel are obvious considering after whoever may buy that property could turn it into a gas station, mini mart, et cetera, and would disrupt our nice stable residential area. My wife and I have raised our now 19-year-old daughter here and plan on keeping this safe, quiet neighborhood alive for our future grandchildren. Please take my worries and concerns as a longtime permanent Culver resident into consideration before you make your decision. Thank you, Tommy Denham, 825 North Lake Shore Drive. And I'm reading these in order that I received them. Dear Culver Town Council members, as you gather facts and opinions on the matter of rezoning the In By The Lake property to commercial two from residential two, I ask you to recall important information. As stated at the zoning hearing on April 20, owners of a current property cannot file a petition for rezoning for sales purposes or sale purposes. Rezoning must be pursued after the sale and by the new owners. I feel like this is being overlooked. This was brought up again at the plan commission meeting on June 20. One of the members voted no at plan commission meeting, one member abstained, and several members were not even present to vote. I would like to voice my opposition in rezoning the property at 8:30 North Lake Shore Drive. Please deny the request being made by the current owners. Many other property owners were present at the last two meetings, and other letters were submitting opposing rezoning during this drawn-out process. I have lived at this property across the street from the inn for over 30 years. I recognize that our residential neighborhood is unique in that we have two properties currently zoned as commercial that are outside of the defined commercial districts, but anything beyond that will significantly change the character of the neighborhood. I want to preserve our neighborhood. I'm worried about what will become of the property when Skyline Builders is done with it. Once it is rezoned commercial, that opens the door for many types of businesses that just don't belong in this part of Culver. Culver has been home to lots of families long before this new push to become a destination town. My long-term residents are many long-term residents leaving or can no longer afford to stay. Please put much thought into this decision. Sincerely, Kathy Rich, 821 North Lake Shore Drive. And then the last one I have is, dear esteemed Town Council members, I write in support of rezoning the motel at 8:30 North Lake Shore Drive, Culver, Indiana, 46511. From R2 to C2, Culver is a resort town, and it is clearly evident that having a motel is an asset to the town and a valuable resource for housing tourists that visit Culver. The property is a non-conforming usage as a motel under the current R2 zoning and cannot qualify for a loan under current lending standards. C2 zoning allows for usage as a motel and will protect the continued operation of a valuable business to this community. I had an experience with a buyer trying to purchase a home in Culver a couple of years ago that had a separate guest house on the property that was rented. When the bank appraiser came out to appraise the property, he met the renter, and the appraiser was forced to check off the box on the form that said not conforming use. The underwriter was forced to deny the loan application because the property was on R1, which does not allow for multiple families living on the same property. That is the type of predicament that is created in a property is not suited for the correct and obvious use of the property. At the plan commission meeting, I asked whether the town could just come in and shut down the motel at any time due to non-conforming usage, and Barry McManway said that the motel was quote-unquote grandfathered in. I do not understand how a lender would apply the term grandfathered in to approving a loan for a non-conforming use property. Thank you for your consideration. Wake McGee, 348 South River Drive.
Thank you, Karen. Before we close the public hearing, any more comment? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
I'm a merchant with Skyline Builders. We're trying to purchase the property. So I just wanted to, you know, basically, we don't have plans to do anything else with that property other than run it as it has been run. We just want to do, we don't want to live there right now. The owners currently live there, and we want to run it as a hotel. So actually, my daughter, we run the property as the plan. So we don't have any plans to commit into anything other than what it already is. And, you know, as far as the meeting goes, I think ultimately everybody was overwhelmingly in, you know, agreed that it should be zoned on the commercial. It just wasn't enough members at the last meeting. So that's why we're here now, kind of that. But we don't have plans for anything else. You know, it'll be, as said by the last person, it's amenity to the community for the people at the academy and that. So that's just, that's why we're here. We don't have any plans to do anything else with it other than kind of as it has been on holiday.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just mentioned briefly, I attached to my handout the findings of the fact of the plan commission was kind of an anomaly of a meeting because it was likely intended by the plan commission members. And although the majority of the members were in favor of the project, we didn't have enough votes of the total board who's bringing to you with the housing condition, so it comes to you without any. But if you look at the findings of fact, they're just, they're all the same.
Anyone online?
Sean Cerisey, 455 Liberty Street. I'm just speaking in favor of the project. I've known the Natuscoas for many years and thought they've done a great job in renovating it and think that it's a real asset to the community. And I can appreciate some of the concerns of the neighbors, that is a concern of the board, and certainly, you know, written commitments limiting the usage to something like a hotel is, you know, something that's within purview of the board. But I think it's a great project and would love to see it continued as of now.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else online? I have a motion to close the public hearing. It's been moved by Mr. Giffen, second by Mr. Hamm. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those same sign. Thank you. We have before me ordinance 2023-011. Ordinance to rezonate 830 North Lake Shore Drive from residential R2 to commercial C2. Whereas Nick and, how do you pronounce the last name? I'm sorry.
Natusco.
Natusco. And Gina Natusco. And Skyline Builders have filed an application with the Culver Plan Commission to rezon property commonly known as 830 North Lake Shore Drive, Culver, Indiana, from residential R2 to commercial C2. Whereas the Culver Plan Commission, after legal notice and public hearing thereon, hands by a majority of the plan commissioners enter finding the fact that the proposed rezoning meets the comprehensive plan, current conditions and character, the most desirable use for land, and the responsible growth and development. As a result, the following parcel was referred to the Culver Town Council on the application to rezon the property from R2 to commercial C2. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2023-011 on first read? It's been moved by Mr. Giffen, so it's second. Second by Mr. Hamm. Any discussion?
Question for Sirisey. One of the letters referenced the fact that rezoning can't be, you know, precipitated by or instigated by a change in ownership. Is that?
I'm not aware of that requirement. The owners who are in current place are making the application, and they're the stakeholders.
Okay. I just, for the record.
Yeah.
And all, thank you.
Having a first and the second for ordinance 2023-011?
Just as a clarification, it's a zoning ordinance, so it gets adopted as our ordinance do. It's not like for second, third kind of thing. It just gets adopted.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those same sign, adopted.
I'll give somebody my seat. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks. Next on the agenda, decision on whether to further regulate industrial solar energy systems and utility-scale battery energy storage system under the zoning ordinance. Mr. Cerisey?
Yes, so just for the audience's sake, again, not to cause confusion, but it's not a public hearing. This is the council's discussion. The night, it's council's decision whether or not to adopt a moratorium on industrial solar and utility-scale battery storage systems. The purpose of the moratorium is to give the town council, plan commission, and public time to work together to get to sensible and safe ordinance revisions that impose reasonable restrictions. Pursuant to statute, you directed the plan commission to hold a public hearing. The task of the plan commission was to either give the ordinance a favorable or unfavorable recommendation. The plan commission had four unfavorable votes, three abstentions, and it takes five votes to have any official action on the plan commission. So there's no recommendation either way in front of this board. I would say there were two prevalent topics that came up at the plan commission. One was the timeframe of the moratorium. There was comment made that if you give us two years, we'll take two years, which I explained over and over that the moratorium can be shortened by the commission by sending a new proposal, or it could be shortened by the town council adopting another ordinance. The moratorium does not have the last two years, even though it says shall. It can be changed at any time through another ordinance review. The other discussion, I think, that probably hung up the plan commission was some citation to Indiana Code 367-28. I'm aware of this statute, and I actually cited it in the proposed moratorium. First, it's a statute that provides in part that a unit may not adopt any ordinance which has the effect of prohibiting or unreasonably restricting the use of solar energy systems other than for the preservation or protection of public health and safety. So the plan commission questioned whether such a moratorium could go in place, and I explained that the moratorium as drafted itself says it's for the protection of the public health and safety. And further, I pointed out that the council heard evidence and argument that there was no fire safety protection plan in place in our current ordinance, which led to some kind of circular conversation about the way the ordinance was written. I think the plan commission didn't get my commentary about the fire safety protection plan. And as a highlight of the importance of such a plan to this council, I would point out the decision in Mammoth Solar, the ERIC 196 NE 3D 221 from the Indiana Court of Appeals, where the Court of Appeals says, "The Plaski County Board of Zoning Appeals ignored the legal requirements of that law and unanimously approved the application, thereby permitting Mammoth to develop a massive solar farm over 4,500 acres without even satisfying a simple requirement such as including a fire protection plan for the safety of the people of Plaski County." So that tells you how important a fire safety protection plan is viewed. The other issue is, we heard that the project is, the council or the commissioners seemed to think that the project was two years away, so what's the purpose of having a two-year moratorium? And as I would state, no one from the energy company has made that written representation to this. So we don't know if the project is actually two years away, six months away, until we have a written representation from the company. We're hearing it from people through hearsay, but we're not hearing it actually directly from the company presented to us in a meeting. And then the other issue about it is, is we're not hearing from all of the companies involved. Just recently, we thought it was just Invenergy in that area up there, but we've, I've figured out that there is a whole new solar company named Res North America that has acquired southwest of the lake, about 240, maybe 250 acres. So how far out and how many projects there are, we don't know or can't comprehend right now. So I still feel that the moratorium as drafted should go in place. I would like to see us work quickly to get reasonable restrictions back. We don't have to take two years, but I think we need a lot of community members collaborating and understanding not just what certain leaders of the community want, but what the people in town and the people surrounding really would like to have for a sensible ordinance. So tonight, when you consider the moratorium, I'm going to give you the factors to consider. You are to consider the comprehensive plan, the current conditions and characters of the district, the most desirable use for which the land in the district is adapted, the conservation of property values, and responsible development for growth. And I'll remind you that the comprehensive plan states areas designated rural are intended for the primary purpose of cultivating the land, producing crops, and raising livestock. Although some isolated residential properties exist within the areas designated as rural, non-agricultural uses should be limited in scale and complementary to agricultural uses. Development in these areas should preserve open space and environmental features where possible. So it's your debate. It's council's debate. That's my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Rich?
Is your co-counsel, Jim Clevenger, in agreement with the moratorium on the solar energy fields?
He is more pro-solar. He likes the idea of solar energy, and he is, he's just more pro-solar, yeah.
And is, in your estimation, and I'm not familiar with it, but he's rated the Marshall County Solar Ordinance, which apparently there was a multi-disciplinary task force that looked at and implemented about four years ago. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Is that something that you think is, and I don't mean just by changing the name from Marshall County to Culver, but adaptable. I know that there were some problems you cited a while before about how that has happened in the past, and you just overlooked, maybe some wording, just from the substantive point of view, the concern about, I guess, safety and fire safety.
So the Marshall County ordinance, in my view, would not be adaptable because I've to just copy and paste in and tweak, because I feel like we would be robbing our community of the process of input. And we really, we really should start from the ground up. But aside from that, the Marshall County ordinance is defective in several ways, in my opinion, in that it doesn't consider decibel ratings for noise. And one of the things on the front face of the publicly submitted lease agreements is that there is an easement for electromagnetic field noise. I have it in front of me, glare. That's on the front face of the Invenergy agreement. So I think that when we look at our ordinance, we should look at that front face of the publicly recorded document and infer that there should be some noise, and we need to have a decibel ordinance in place. I don't believe that, and I'm speaking off of memory now, off of the Marshall County ordinance, but I don't believe there's a fire safety protection plan. I can't say that with certainty, but there's some setbacks issues that are being debated actively at the county right now on what setbacks should be. So that ordinance has more thought than this ordinance, but does this ordinance have very little thought to it?
According to the state statute that you quoted and others have quoted, the dictate from the state is that with the exception of safety concerns, so this is, it is not a citizens' popularity vote. It's, state has already said that they believe that solar power is in our future and is in our present, but the exceptions that local jurisdictions can implement have to do with safety-related.
For public protection and safety in that particular statute, and we have cited it for the public protection and safety, although I do question if that statute even truly is meant to govern this kind of situation. And we'll never know unless a court sorts it out. But the statute was adopted in 1981, which is long before the first industrial solar field started even popping up in areas like California and things.
Thank you. Bill?
As I've stated at the county level plan commission, as well as our local town plan commission last week, these, I'm in favor of the moratorium because four years ago, when the county did their moratorium, they didn't know what a large-scale battery energy storage system was. And this is brand-new to what's going on. And these storage systems are the size of an 18-wheeler and cargo box, and when these things explode or burn, you can't put them out. Just had to let them burn forever and ever, and they could cause extra damage to the local ground, grass fires, also the emissions that are let out into the area, air. So that's why I'm in favor of this moratorium, just because I don't think, well, I think, you know, that we just need to tighten the restraints and, you know, we're learning as we go, and it's better to have it and not need this moratorium than to need it and not have it. We can always shorten the timeline, but, you know, that's my point.
Thank you, sir. Sally?
I definitely think that we need to get a group of, you know, people that are, now from both sides of the aisle, those that are for it and those that are maybe against it, and see if we can come up with a consensus from everyone showing what we should have. I think our zoning is, in ordinance, when that was done and implemented, it's been enough years ago that really, other than rooftop solar, there really wasn't much else out there. And, you know, the idea of fields of solar energy with batteries that, you know, for storage, until we know the, the safety features that you need in order to allow storage, I think that we need to, you know, slow down and, and get a group together and come up with an answer. And I would like to see that done as soon as possible. I, you know, I don't want to see it take two years. But some of the information coming from the state looks like it's not even going to start for a while. But, you know, I think that we have some, some people that, definitely not myself, that are experts in the, in the field, and I'd like to hear from them and see what we can find out so that we can intelligently change our zoning to fit, fit solar.
Yeah, I agree with Sally. Sally, I think we need to find some smart consultants that know a lot about this because we don't know what we don't know. And I know this issue is very tricky because you have facts and you have passion, and there are people on both sides of the fence. So this is a very emotional issue, I know, for a lot of people. And I think we need to slow down a little bit and get some information, and I'd like to see us get it solved by the beginning of next year or next spring.
Thank you.
And sooner if possible.
As soon as possible. I echo Mr. Giffen's remarks, and I think that it's important that we do put a moratorium.
And I think that it's important that we do put a moratorium in place. It can always be shortened. It's not like it's cast in stone for two years, but I think that there's, there's enough questions about these projects. And I think that we have a lot of emotions on one side to the other, but I think it's time to kind of step back and look at this and as Sally said, and I think Bill Hamm said, get a group together to look at this. But I'm in favor of the moratorium.
Mr. President, I would like a motion that we approve the moratorium.
Mr. Githens makes the notion we approve the moratorium. As a second by Mr. Hamm. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Nay.
Nay. Four, one. Moratorium adopted. Next item on the agenda, second, third read, ordinance 2023-010, amend the golf cart ordinance. I think you all have in front of you, Alira Hooford, you prepared this?
I can address the question.
Okay.
We had talked about devising the golf cart ordinance. He has, Jim Clevenger takes on rewriting it based upon some concerns related to a particular incident that happened where someone falsified or fraudulently copied a golf cart permit. And so Jim wrote the ordinance that is the current proposal amendment that is before us today. And if you look at the, the sheet that I had passed out, the two yellow portions are what were added to the original ordinance. And basically, it says that the violation, I mean, the ordinance, as it exists, says that someone who is cited for three violations will have their privileges suspended for at least one year. What was added to it is also for a violation involving conduct that would constitute crime under the state of Indiana laws. And then also added was at the discretion of the Culver Police Department. I think in our discussions, the issue of discretion was related to the criminal acts, not necessarily to the three violations that were in the original ordinance. I don't know that, at least in my understanding, I don't know that our original intent was to say that also the police department would have the discretion to waive those three required, those three violations as a, a clause to suspend the, some of these privileges. And so what I've proposed or suggested are, are two different options, which I think addresses that issue depending upon how the council wants to go with it. I, I really don't have a preference, but the first proposal is A, which basically deletes the discretion of the police department and just says that someone can have their, their permit, if they have three citations within a year, they can lose their privileges, or if they're cited for a criminal violation related to the use of the golf course, golf cart. And I think the discretion there, at least in my mind, comes in that the, the officer has the discretion whether to write any of those citations to begin with. And what they determine in their best judgment and circumstances would be the case. So that's why I deleted it, that option. The second option basically just clarifies that the discretion is related to the criminal action and not to the three violations. Does that make sense to people? But.
Go on.
Is that understood or interesting? Okay.
Bill?
Either one's fine with me.
Sally?
Well, I guess having these two, I'm just seeing them today, you know, I saw the other one that was originally shown. I do think that the current amendment needs some work. And I'm not sure that, you know, that we should take a second vote on it until we hash out what, what the reading should actually be on the amendment.
I agree. Yeah, I think the trick is that there's a lot of creative people out there that are going to figure out a way around it.
Yeah.
And it's hard to predict all of those, that, all of those scenarios. But, yeah, I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
We're going to have to think long and hard about, okay, what could they do?
Well, it's like everything.
Right, right.
Well, if I read this, if I read this and understand it in my mind, it looks like number one in proposal A, we're not, violation, conduct constituted a crime or the laws of the state of Indiana. But proposal B also gives a little more discretion to the Culver Police Department, and I'm in favor of that. I think that it strengthens the ordinance and I'm kind of in favor of proposal B. What's the point?
Good. I don't know, but myself, I would like to be able to, you know, digest all of these for a while, you know, until the next meeting. And, you know, if you want, have a, have a input session prior to a meeting or before the next meeting and, you know, hash out what we think would be a better, current amendment.
Trying to differentiate the difference here between the two, I think that could be the, um, they both have crime under the laws of state of Indiana, right? And you're talking about the main difference. That's what I'm seeing is the discretion.
Discretion, right.
Yeah.
And in proposal B, the discretion is, is clearly stated and enunciated, I think, as I said before. And my understanding is, you know, when an officer stops somebody, they have the discretion and judgment at that point in time. So I'm not questioning that at all. It's just, I think the, the current amendment, I thought, was, that's something that I don't think we intend to say at the beginning of it, which is that that discretion also applies to the three violations. And I don't think that was.
So this is more explicit and clear?
That's all. And I don't have, I, I'm fine with either of them. If we want to take time to study it, I'm fine with that. Proceedually, if we do that, this is our first second reading today, I believe. And so do we do the second reading and then, you know, go to the third reading or do we just, it's for voting on the second reading? I, I'm going to say yeet because I'm not one that likes to kick the can down the road.
Okay.
Okay. So may I have a motion to postpone the golf cart ordinance 23, 2023-01L to the next meeting?
I think somebody was, they were going to move forward with it. I think, I think maybe Mr. Partey was on the postpone page and then there was a group on the move forward page. Either way, you want it.
No, he can make a motion into the second of the times.
I guess my question is, is his motion to accept proposal B on this? Okay. Yeah. And so it has to change.
What, that's Phil Ham's motion?
Yeah.
Bill Hamm moved to include and second read proposal B. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we'll have third read the next meeting.
Yeah.
Was that a second reading? That was a second.
Yeah, it was a second reading.
Yes.
Wait, it was?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second read. The third read will be.
With, with B in there.
Yeah, with B in there.
The actual motion was not, make a motion to add the language of proposal B. It was pass ordinance 2023-010, amend the ordinance, adding on second reading.
Proposal.
The proposal B, was that your motion?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for, thank you.
And then we can, all right. Next item on the agenda, town manager.
Yep. Discussion at our executive session.
Go ahead.
No.
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 Or not the discussion, but the decision?
No.
No.
There, there was just.
Yes, I'd like to ask for a motion to extend offer employment as town manager to Kevin Dante.
So.
It's been moved by Mr. West. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? If not, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
I abstained.
Mr. Hamm?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Four with one extension. We will extend an offer of employment to Mr. Dante. Department head reports. EMS. All right, thank you. Fire.
Yeah, two things. One, I want to thank all the vendors and towns, excuse me, donated to our fireman's festival last Saturday, which turned out to be a real good time with us. It worked out, weather wasn't good and went on. And second of all, I would like to, I got the information back on the radios and I don't know if you guys seen it or not. And I'd like to go ahead with, with the purchase of the 16 radios. The price is the $92,063.60. 16 radios.
Ninety-two what?
I looked into it, Sally, for the timeline on them and they told me between one and nine months. That answer came up.
That's about par for the course, I can say.
Trying to see how that in the budget?
We had set aside money in the keynote capital development fund.
Okay.
For that, if it's going to be nine months, we could probably, they'll not get come after until the first, after the year. We're also splitting the money with the, with part of it, wouldn't you?
Okay.
And there was $10,000 in his budget.
Okay.
Do you want, do you want to end the motion to approve that? If we agree to that?
That's what Mr. West is asking, maybe you have a comment?
Marley?
Yeah. I have talked with Terry and I understand that, that the town and the township have talked about this before, but I want the towns to keep in mind that over the last three years with the uniforms and the helmets, and then the next year, we had air packs for $72,000. And now this year, we've got radios for $92,000. In the last three years, two and a half years, my half has been an additional $138,000 that we have spent on extras above our budget. That's just my half for the fire department. So although I know that the fire department needs it and we haven't gotten them for a long time and I have agreed to it, please keep in mind that we can't keep this up. $138,000 in two years is more than we can afford. That's above the budget.
And we did just do a longevity thing for a while, kind of, we're scheduling out so that it's not a surprise when these things go up towards, you know, 10 years, someone good for 10 years, someone good for 20 years, later for 30 years. When those things are ready to be repurchased, you'll know way ahead of time because that is when it's going to happen. How do we know what's the cost then? Between one and nine months, that's what I'm thinking.
May I have a motion to approve the purchase for $92,063.60 for radios for the fire department? It's been moved by Mr. West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hamm. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved. Anything else, Terry?
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wayne, please.
Well, I'd like to discuss the hiring position. Get gaps again, through the last guy. Did some group offer a job about a month ago to an individual, contact me the next day, heard of that. Like to tweak a couple of things, offers, but I think it's something you need to discuss a little bit if you'd like.
Did we do that in the work session or you wanted?
We'll do that in a work session, Wayne.
Yeah.
Okay.
Six in the morning, if you want to start that.
Pardon?
He's still eager. Nobody won't go. Yes, please.
You wanted, do you, the need to do the work session before the meeting, next meeting?
I would think as soon as possible.
As soon as possible. All right. All of everybody's calendar books.
How much time do you need, David?
Realistically, the news to be something is Friday.
Friday or Monday?
I can do Friday or Monday.
I could not do Friday, Monday.
Monday?
Yeah. Sally? I think I'm, I think I'm okay. Yeah, I'm okay. Either one. So if Friday doesn't work for Rich, then?
Monday.
Monday.
Monday. Five o'clock?
Do it during work day?
Yeah. Yeah. Can we do it like at two or three?
Oh, okay. Three o'clock?
Pretty soon.
Yes, that works for me.
Three o'clock, Monday, then, current. All right, thank you. Anything else, Wayne? Thank you. Amber, are you online? Okay. Utilities, Bob? Okay. Boards of commissions, Steve?
If you don't mind, I'll stand back here.
That's fine, thank you.
Missing the podium up. So the TRC has had one meeting so far this month. It was for a roof mounted solar array in an L1 district, approved unanimously. The plan commission had four case hearings and proposed additions and deletions to the Culver zoning ordinance regarding solar energy systems and battery storage units for the July meeting. Case number 009, the plan commission, State Road 10. Case number zero zero nine, the plan commission, state road ten, request for zoning change from S-one to a C-one. Requested zoning changes to allow for service and maintenance upon tune boats, this case was withdrawn during the hearing. Case B zero one zero, Indiana Land Trust Company, fourteen Venetian Village was the address, to replat lots thirteen and fourteen to a single lot, that passed. Case zero P zero one one, one nine four zero five nineteenth road, minor subdivision, two lots. Current acreage was at five point zero one, split into two, this passed unanimously. Case P zero one two, an application been filed by the building commissioner on behalf of the town Culver. Approve the rezoning parcels currently zone PUD, land unit development, to rezone back to S-one suburban residential district. For article five of Culver zoning ordinance. This was for five parcels owned by Culver Investment Corporation, sometimes referred to as Tom Besty's property, this passed unanimously unanimously. This will come before the town council to approve the zoning ordinance change at the end of August. BZA, the agenda for the June meeting, case B zero seven. Filed by Craig and Tanya Arm to approve a variance usage for the property located at one-ten North Plymouth Street. Addition request of special use variance for rear yard setback ten feet, request was withdrawn. Case B zero eight, petition was filed by Rocky Bachman Concrete to approve a variance usage for the property located at four oh four East Lake Shore Drive. Addition requested a special use variance for rear yard setback of ten feet, request was withdrawn. In June, we had. Eight building permits applied for, they're in various stages from incomplete, pending, incomplete, over received one thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty cents for those permits. Just as a refresher, in May, we had ten building permits over in about the same area. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, thank you.
Nice job. Pre-commission.
Report.
I have a couple of. Things for your approval, two familiar, but that's for the fire. The other one for five thousand eight oh eight, Culver Lake Maxon Happy Visitor Center, five thousand dollars, that's just for the maintenance. Amstons Corporation, seven thousand thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, that is for the new utility billing system, that will get funded on. Midline Urban Publishing, seven thousand two hundred dollars, that not to fire, but that is for. Out of the contract services for writing of the comprehensive plan. Well, and Humphrey Clevenger's three C, nine thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-three cents for legal fees. Two for Zainer excavating, ten thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and that's for the repairs to the sewer line. That.
On college.
The line issue on college, I told you about at the last meeting. And then three thousand three hundred forty-one dollars for sand and gravel to the park. And finally, North Central Ambulance Sales and Services, two thousand five seventy-six, sixty-nine, and that's for EMS for a base radio.
May I have a motion to approve claims over twenty-five hundred dollars? It's been moved by Mr. West, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Charlie, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Just to give you a heads up, I met with Joe Styles today from another insurance company, brought the new policy. For the property general liability linebacker, commercial law enforcement, cybersecurity, cybercrime, inland marine, commercial umbrella, and auto. That total is eighty-four thousand eighty-four dollars. He explained that there's about an eight thousand dollar increase and the majority of that increase is due to the increase in property values. They routinely check out their insurance agencies and and bid it out to see, make sure that we're in the best plan. And he is confident that we staying with EMC Insurance is our best bet. I would just ask for approval to renew with EMC Insurance and to hit a invoice one oh five.
It's been moved by. Mr. Ham, is there a second? It's been seconded by Mr. West. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved.
I've met with all the department heads to review their budgets and their, as Terry alluded, the capital purchases, we're trying to make out. A spreadsheet to just map out when when different needs are gonna hit, so maybe we can start getting a plan together, sort of putting away money when those things hit. It it's anticipated, not that it's not anticipated now, it's usually just in the department heads. You know, in their mind, we want to get it on writing and it'll provide a nice picture for you all to see kind of where. What gets replaced at what intervals. The one thing I am waiting on are the salaries. And that's a big part of the budget, so as soon as I get those, I can finish out. The state also just released most of the revenue reports and I'm working on getting those into my spreadsheet. So then we had meeting on water and sewer rates. And then finally, we'll we'll do some discussions with with the department heads. And then finally, one of the things when we talked about entire employee retention last spring, I believe, one of. One item was getting us set up with Hoosier Start. You all have gone through that process and done the the resolution and we had Jerry Childs from Nationwide, he works with Hoosier Start in on Monday. To make a presentation to the employees, so he is available to talk with them virtually, help them get signed up, so.
Thank you, anything else?
Nope, that's all.
Okay. Attorney's report, Mr. Reese.
Yes, we have full updates on the Culver neighbors versus Culver, the Culver Dunes Housing Project. There, the plaintiff tried a motion to correct errors, which the council was aware of, the court. Denied that motion to correct errors and stated that if you would like. An injunction, that I would certainly invite the town and others to bring. A suit for or a claim for attorney's fees, so the court was kind of warning the plaintiff. That shouldn't bring its claim for injunction. The claim for injunction did get scheduled for a hearing and subsequently, the plaintiff withdrew. Its request for a hearing, I think based on how strongly the court's order was worded. Our question next is, will they try to appeal the motion to reconsider that was submitted or the order that came out on July seventh? There's thirty days to pot notice of appeal, so we'll know when that happens, it's coming up shortly. We'll decide then, probably in an executive session, or at least talk about in an executive session, what we'll be doing with the counterclaim. The other notice or information Jim gave me to pass along is there is a judicial review of the Culver BZA and Plan Commission. Concerning four fifteen lofts that's scheduled for argument August twenty-second at nine AM in the Marshall Circuit Court. Yep.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the room here for utility shut off or ordinance violation? Anyone online? Hearing none, citizen. Yes.
Alexa Gardner, five thirteen Academy Road in Culver. I am here to highlight an issue of safety concerning the rocks at the new playground. At the April twenty-fifth meeting, I brought up this concern at this meeting and then again at the twenty-third, May twenty-third meeting. It was said that the edges had been rounded and the issue was closed. But if you go and look at the rocks, the the sharp edges remain. And I want to consider the proximity of these rocks to the play structures. Children are naturally curious and energetic and the placement of the rocks as benches near the play structures creates an unnecessary risk of collision and injury. Picture scenario where a child slips or loses their balance while running and they collide with the rocks. The potential for serious harm is undeniable and as responsible adults, we cannot ignore such preventable dangers. And, you know, young children in particular have less developed coordination and spatial awareness. And they are more susceptible to warning and dangers and accidental falls. Playground should be a place where young kids can learn, grow, and explore without unnecessary risks. And having those rocks as benches undermines the very purpose. It is essential that we adhere to established public safety standards and best practices for playgrounds that emphasize child safety, you know, and friendly design. Like rubberized elements and padded surfaces and rounded corners. The National Recreation Park Association emphasizes the importance of having cushioned surfaces and, you know, soft edge seating. And these aren't either, so I think we need to do better. We need to create an environment that prioritizes the well-being of our kids. And I think it's greatly negligent not to remove the rocks. So I have brought some pictures of the current state of the rocks for the council to look at. And you can see here. Where the corners had been rounded, but you can see that the rock is just as sharp and just as hard. And within feet of the play structure. And I get that there were, you know, professional playground inspectors, but they are assessing the play structure itself, not the surrounding aesthetic elements of it. And it is so important that these be removed, that a rail be put next to the edge. Here's my child, this was not a staged picture, she was running near the rock, so she's three. And, you know, there's just, you know, so many concerns by so many parents that can see that this is a hazard. And it's just, it's just unnecessary and completely inappropriate to have this kind of thing at a play structure, you know? It is immediately between the play structure and the swing side. And so the kids are running from one to the other and back all day long and they don't have the awareness that we do. You know, so we need, we need to do better here and change this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizen input? Marlene.
I'm sorry, Marlene, are you going to have to proceed? I have a request for the town council, as you know, the township pays for half of the fire and the EMS in our budget. And our budgets are set, our public hearing is for September seventh with the adoption on September twenty-fifth. And I would like to ask if there's any chance at all that the town board could have those two departments. Their budgets submitted so that we can have our budget finished and and have our public hearing by the seventh of September. When do you want this?
What date would you want those?
Just use that the date, I don't care.
Well, I just. I would say. Because you get a deadline and you're. I mean, like, can I?
My, yeah, yeah, my public hearing is September seventh, so I have to have it done. And and I need a definite. This is what our, our budget is gonna be, because. You know, sometimes we have the, we they submit them and we discuss them, but then you all change it later and I can't do that. I have to have what our budget's gonna be so that I can have my public hearing.
How far in advance of of the seventh, do you need?
Well, I'd like to have at least a week, so that I'll have time to work on it after we.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I don't like looking at something the same day I make a decision.
I think, I think, I know Terry has been working on it and and I know Jeff has been working on it, so. And I think they have a pretty good idea, they have one to do it already, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
I would like to do it so that I can have mine submitted on time.
Any other citizen then put in the room? Yes, sir.
Terry Chessel Dean, five twenty seventh. Notice that there's been parking curb painting. South one area, and I appreciate that very much, do we know that's completed or there's still more to go?
That's true, I can, I can find out and contact you directly if that would be helpful.
And in addition, actually, I mean, come in, I brought it up last. Town council meeting, grass, vispo, acting, and bottom of on the, it was getting. Intense, it's chest hot in somewhere.
Anyone online? Hearing none, council issues, actions, Mr. West.
Just to, I guess, to data to Karen and. Marlene's issues concerning the budget is, you're ready, Karen, to to get a tentative schedule. Us to begin to meet about that, I, we hope to finish up the the salary and retention. Trying for this week, but it's relatively probably next week, but. But getting it on, I don't know if it becomes count, is as far in advance for what we need to, but it's not.
Well, if at all possible, I mean, if you guys, I'm just kind of waiting on you at the point.
Okay.
So if we want to hit it at the end of next week or the first of the week of the seventh, that would be great and get as much done as possible. And I'm out for a little bit, and so we really, I need to have it wrapped up by the eleventh. In order to take care of Marlene's request.
Yep.
Bill?
First of all, I want to thank Marlene for her comments on regarding EMS and fire budgets and getting them to you as.
EMS.
Soon as possible and 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 the council understands, you know, the dilemma and the problems you've had over the last couple of years. And I just appreciate your comments because we all need to work towards getting stuff done sooner than later. And secondly, as president of the library, I want to make our residents of Culver Union Township aware that you're invited. To drop in at the library's north meeting room to review and provide feedback on library design options prepared by Arcos Designs. We're getting ready to reimagine the both the upstairs area and the downstairs area of the library. Session will be held. We're having an open house on Tuesday, August the first, four to six PM with representatives from Arcos. Who is doing the library refresh and our library staff will be on hand to answer your questions. I'm going over tomorrow to look what Arcos has also done a refresh at the. The Bremen Library and they're also doing work at the Plymouth Public Library. And I'm going with a group over there tomorrow to Bremen to see what they've accomplished, so. Please come by and check out the new, what we're thinking about at the library. That's all I have, sure.
Thank you, Marlene.
I don't have anything.
I have nothing, Bill?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
In terms of a, a work group to work on the zoning for Solway House, the debt comes to the planning commission and the council, we're good at initiatives.
I'd like to see the council really help the planning commitment, I feel like they're overwhelmed right now, they're working very hard and they don't get paid. And they're hearing a lot of difficult cases and I think they need help from you. And we need to somehow structure a, a, a group, a committee of citizens and plan commission members and council members and seek some broad input.
So if we came up with the names of two or three people, then at our next meeting to make a motion that the council appoint a, a study group that will get these and let those. Rear four people recruit others and and sort of.
Yeah, I think we need to start looking at an affair assembly of them, you know, I, one of the plan commission members after the meeting said, I mean, we don't have the bandwidth for this. It's, it, we need a bunch of people and some subject matter experts too, so.
Yeah. And I, our, our zoning ordinance has a lot of, you know, not just in solar. And I, our, and our zoning ordinance has a lot of, you know, not just in solar.
Yes.
You know, and somehow or other we need to look at that more comprehensively, I guess. I don't know how.
The whole zoning ordinance needs a overhaul.
Sorry.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Githen, say to Mr. Hamm. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You.